Good morning, everyone. Today is Monday, July 22, 2024. It's now 10:00 a.m. We're here for a special session in Hunt County Commissioners' Court. This time I'll call the meeting to order. We have Commissioners Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stowall presiding over the meeting. Commissioners, we have no minutes. Public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Daniels, anybody online? Be in no public comments. I'll close the public testimony. No old business, new business, nothing with the consent calendar. Go to regular session. Number one, fiscal year '24, '25 budget. We're here to hear from Chad and Buddy on their request for some salary changes within the, or I think an add of a position in the sheriff and some salary changes in the jail. So whichever wants to go first.
Sheriff, sorry, Jack, it's a quick note. Our visual is not working correctly, but the audio is.
I think that's fine as long as they can hear the audio. We're not putting anything on the screen.
If they can hear the audio, that's fine. My internet's not working. I'm not sure if that was an impact on my internet.
And our agenda says.
Audio's working.
Yeah.
The video for Buddy up here is going to be fine, but all the other videos are not working properly.
Okay. Let Brandon know for tomorrow. Go ahead, Buddy.
Morning. Morning, Judge. Commissioners. We're here this morning to discuss our budget request that was presented to you prior to the cost of living discussions that we had. So I needed to clarify that none of these salaries that we're asking increases on has anything to do with the cost of living raise. My understanding, you want me to talk about the...
The new position.
New position was going to be requesting for a CID, or Criminal Investigation Division, investigator. This investigator would be assigned to the Crimes Against Persons unit, which would increase our total investigative staff to Crimes Against Persons to three. Speaking with the lieutenant this morning, he would like to have two of the investigators to work felony offenses and the other one, the newly created one, to work misdemeanor offenses. And the money would be, the salary that we're asking for, total benefits is $97,480. And that is excluding the five, that is excluding the 5% and the $4,000 per year assignment pay and vehicle. Well, I need to get him a vehicle also. I can't think of any other. Oh, we'll have to give him a laptop computer, but I don't know of any other expenditures that might occur to create this position.
So he'll be just a deputy's pay then, or?
Well, he'll be a deputy's pay with the title of investigator.
He gets the $4,000 supplement?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
That $97,40, that is, that's not included in reference to a vehicle. Is that correct?
Correct. That's just base salary.
But also, in reference, are you asking for this with the five, we're looking at a 5% increase. Is that not included or, this would not be inclusive of that. Am I correct?
The dollar amount that I gave you does not include the 5% cost of living raise.
Yes, sir.
This request was given prior to the cost of living raise discussion that y'all had a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, sir. That's what my understanding was. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
It was correct.
So without that, the other people in that division would be making more than this person? Is it?
No.
If we don't?
This base pay of that $97,480 does not include the 5%.
Understand that, but if we don't, if he doesn't get the 5%, then he'd be making less.
Yes, sir.
Than the other people doing the same job.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what they're asking for. We're just trying to make sure where we're at with pay scales. We don't want to, just want to make sure those, that group of three or four people now.
The CID investigators, the deputies that are assigned to criminal investigations make the same.
Okay.
Now, I don't, y'all discussed and voted on that 5% cost of living raise the other day.
Right.
But I'm not counting on that. Things could happen between now and then, so.
That's why I brought that up.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Got it. All right, Commissioners. Any other questions?
Do you have somebody in mind, Buddy?
We would ask the deputies within the employment of the sheriff's office whether they're in patrol or other assignments, which would be the mental health. If they're interested in the Criminal Investigations Division, then we'd ask them if we, well, I'll take that back. The sheriff could go outside the agency and recruit somebody.
Are any of these going to be assigned to the children's investigations for CPS cases?
This position that we're asking for would not have anything to do with crimes against children.
Okay. I've heard a few comments that we needed more help in that area.
We have, we have two. And right now, we've got three, counting a sergeant that's been trained and can do the criminal investigations for the child.
Okay. So we are, we are addressing that somewhere?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody got a, any more questions? Entertaining motion for approval of this action item?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now we need to go to the jail. That would be with the 5% increase. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Everybody understood that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, before we go to the jail.
That'll be in addition to the 5% that salary you're...
5%.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we'll get it. We all got that. All right.
Okay. The next one, we were asking for an increase for the Criminal Investigations Secretary, the Assistant to the Criminal Investigation Division. They've asked for $22,92 in her salary.
What does that make her?
It'd make her $47,742 base pay.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, got any questions?
Plus the five percent.
Plus the five?
Yes.
Entertaining motion for approval of the salary increase for the, what, secretary for the investigators?
So moved.
Hang on, let me finish. I'm just making sure I said that right. CID Administrative Assistant and a salary increase of $2,292 with a 5% in addition that she'll get the 5% increase.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
And motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
On the late entry, we were requesting pay increases in the supervision. That's what Chad just handed out to y'all for the communications supervisors. He handed out two handouts. They weren't submitted until July the 12th.
Okay.
But we're asking, we're asking that the dispatch supervisor pay get increased to $62,34 base pay.
We increased dispatch supervisor base pay from $69 to $75. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, yes.
Where did the $62 come in?
That's the difference between the $69 and the $75.
Okay.
And what's the, what's the reasoning why, Buddy?
Would be the change in the structure that we started back middle of this year on the communications, senior communications director. Then the dispatch supervisors' responsibilities have changed.
We looked at that probably about, about four months ago. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
That's what this was about. Also, if I'm not mistaken, we were talking about that in reference to radios and all this, in reference to possibly at a later date hiring more dispatchers in reference for coverage. Am I correct?
At this time, we're not entertaining that thought.
Yes.
Not this fiscal budget year. We're looking at just trying to get our computer system up and functional and the radio system up and functional. If we do dispatch fire, then we would have to increase communications personnel.
What was, the regular dispatch, what's that salary in reference to it? I understand dispatch supervisor's salary is $69,703. And basically, you want it to go up to $75. What is the dispatcher pay at this point in time? Do we know?
Communications, I don't have that in front of me. I want to say it's...
Forty-seven, $190.
Yeah, but the 5% will be $49,550.
Buddy, where did we come up with the increase, the $62,34 amount, up to the $75,937? Is that, do you have some history on that?
If you will, put that mic down, please, in the way we can hear you.
Your question again?
I asked, where did the $75,937 come from, amount? I know it's increasing the pay $62,34, but why are they asking for that amount?
It would be in comparison to the sergeant's salary within our pay structure.
With the 5%, she, that person would move to $73,188. But she would be behind if you're comparing it to that salary structure, the additional 5% then? Commissioners, got any other questions? No comments? Entertaining motion for approval? All right, motion fails. Any suggestions, Commissioners? Another, a different motion?
I'm still trying to read up on it.
Okay. You don't come back to it?
Well, I'm still trying to figure some numbers here and look at a few other things.
Okay.
We'll be more than excited to come back before the budget gets approved.
You going to wait and do it tomorrow?
Yeah, let's, yeah, I want to look at this a little bit harder.
Okay. All right.
Okay, the next, the next position we're asking for is the Assistant Supervisor in Communications. That's also the P-25 Radio Administrator and the, what they call the TAC, Assistant to the TAC, making sure we're in compliance with the SEGS and TELETS and so forth within the state. But they're asking for a...
Is that one of the handouts that you gave us? Because I just have one.
Yes, that's the Assistant Supervisor, Assistant Supervisor slash TAC slash P-25 Radio Administrator.
Thank you.
We're requesting his base salary from $55,548 to be increased to $63,795. We'll just give that, present that to y'all today, I think, for the first time. So I understand if it takes more time.
Okay. We'll review both of these and try to act on it tomorrow.
All right.
All right.
And now I'm going to introduce Chad Stroud, Captain over the jail, also known as the jail administrator, for his preparation.
Hello, I'm Chad Stroud. Nice to meet you.
May I say something in reference to this?
Yes, sir.
Before you get started. I want to tell you something. Several years ago, basically, we were in problems. We had very much trouble. We couldn't find how many years passed a jail standard. And from my understanding, it's because of you taking over that this was finally, that we have had no problem with the state down our back. And I appreciate that for the simple reason it has given us extra time in reference to making decisions in reference to having a jail or a new jail. And I want to commend you on the job that you've done all these years because it basically, if it hadn't been for the sheriff along with Buddy Oxford and also with your push to get it right, in which I have sat on some of those, I have been in there earlier when they failed. But I do appreciate the job that you have done in reference to this. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir. Here to talk about the budget request increase for salaries that I put together. The initial goal was in justification or to solidify the retention of our command staff and management team. The command staff being our, the jail administrator, lieutenants, and medical department supervisor. The management team being our detention sergeants and the other LVN position, which is 13 total positions is what we're looking at. The second goal was to eliminate the negative salary differential between similar sized agencies and detention centers. The third goal was to create balanced financial promotional steps between the line staff, sergeants, lieutenants, and the captain. The fourth goal was to get the command staff and the management team within pay parity in the sheriff's office. I handed out, or included in the budget, the proposal that I had put together, and I think I've added a second sheet for your review. Did everybody receive that second sheet? It is the same as everything that I'd written down in the initial proposal, just breaking down the numbers a little bit. We did a jail comparison between five different counties. Those counties being Bastrop, Kaufman, Liberty, Rockwall, and Victoria. And if you look at the other county averages, the jail administrator average came out to The lieutenant came out to $71,106. And the sergeants came out to $61,540. In this initial request for the salary increase, I've asked for the captain's position to be moved to $89,169. And this is to meet the goals of the sheriff and the chief for starting the pay parity within the sheriff's department. The lieutenant's salary moving up to the average of $71,106. And then the sergeants being moved to $61,540. The medical department supervisor, she's part of the command staff. I'm looking at keeping her the same as the lieutenant's salary, which is $71,106. And then the LVN being bumped up to $68,936 to maintain the current $4,140 that we have between our medical supervisor and the LVN currently. The total salary increase for the 13 positions that I'm asking for is $100,323, not, that's not including the 5% that has already been approved. I would request that that 5% be added after the raise or if the salary increase is approved. If you currently in, on this particular situation, the captain's position at the sheriff's office currently makes $89,169. The captain's position over in the jail side currently makes $71,090. This is an $18,079 differential. The lieutenants on the sheriff's office side currently makes $82,090. The lieutenants in the jail makes $58,874. This is a $23,216 deficit. Right now, what we're looking to achieve is, if you look at the starting deputy salary, it is $63,795. A lieutenant in the jail can leave and go to the deputy's position at the sheriff's office and make $7,000, and make $4,921, sorry. So we're fighting to keep this command staff and our sergeants that we currently have, as Mr. Martin brought out with how we're passing jail inspections and things is going good in the state. That's why we put this salary increase in front of you today.
Commissioners, any comments? Questions?
I'm still trying to figure out numbers here.
All right.
I'm still adding.
Y'all want to digest this and act on it tomorrow?
Yeah, please.
All right.
I would like to bring this up also while we're thinking about this. I've looked at this rather closely, but also I've watched the news. And to my knowledge, basically, as far as problems that are in the jail that some other counties are having, we're not having that. We're not making the news, especially Fort Worth. So like I say, I commend you on what job y'all have done. I've talked about deaths and all this because that is getting, and that's not only in Fort Worth, that's other counties also.
Yes, sir. I think we all want to pay, you know, comparable wages for the jobs people do, and we certainly want the best staff we can have, and you don't get the best staff without paying, so. That's in all departments, not just y'all's.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, we'll take this up tomorrow. Let everybody digest it some more and...
You said there was something passed out, Chad, recently that was not in the numbers and stuff like that?
That was the comparison?
No.
No, I added it to the...
It was...
I added it to your packet.
Yeah, we don't have it, I guess.
Was...
From the original.
Oh, is that where Jessica went to go make us copies? Okay. That's...
Okay. All right, we'll get them the copies if they don't have it.
Thank you, Captain. I appreciate your help.
Moving on to purchasing. The Director of Purchasing is requesting a cell phone allowance that she gets phone calls at night and weekends when things are happening at the jail and all that's happening, and they got to do something for purchasing. And of course, then when they're out of the office doing inventories and all, they don't have any way to communicate with their office except on their own cell phone. So she's asking for one cellphone allowance at $75 a month. And along that same line, she's asking for $100 a person in her staff, which would be $300 to the budget for uniforms when they go out on inventories and they're crawling around in some of the places they have to get to do the inventory. She says that they frequently ruin their clothes and that they would like to have some reimbursement for the clothes so they can either buy something just for that or be able to replace them if they get sold or ruined. They do inventories a couple of weeks out of the year, I think, is about what they do. So it's, and if you've been down to the warehouse on Bickett Street, I think it is, it's, it's not good over there. And some of, probably some of y'all's barns might have a little grease and all stacked around it. Might be a little tough to get to. So that's the request for that. There's one other we'll talk about in executive session.
So is it $100 a month for uniforms or just...
No, total, for the year. $100 for the year. So it'll be $300. She's requesting $300 in, be a new line item for, I guess we'd call it, uniforms or clothing allowance, whatever we want to call it, since they technically don't have a uniform.
The cell phones, is that just one?
Just one, yeah.
It'll be $75 a month?
Yeah. It'd be, whatever that math is, $900, I think it is. Any questions? Any more questions? Entertaining motion for approval for the phone allowance and the uniform allowance.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Counting, got any, got any comments?
Do you want it to be a uniform allowance or just a uniform expenditure line item?
Probably needs to be an expenditure, I think.
The phone can be an allowance, but the uniform being expenditure.
Right.
This is the one, yeah, it's just...
It'd be a line item.
Yes, yeah.
We're just going to buy shirts, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's what they're talking about. Or they may, you know, may buy them some jeans or something too to go crawl around in. So she said they needed something that, where they didn't have to ruin their clothes every time they go do it.
I'd just recommend get with Kenneth Peters and he can hook them up on some coveralls.
Look good in stripes.
And by the way, the purchasing committee did meet last week and recommended these, so you know. Stacy, are there, Brent, we got any other questions for now? Brittany, were you here to talk or to listen?
Both, whichever.
What? Have you had something? You came in, I didn't know if you wanted to address the court or...
Yeah, I'm happy to.
I didn't want to leave you out since we...
No, I have, I'm listening too. I'm making notes and everything since we have to get all those entered. I'm happy to talk about it if you give me the chance.
Sure.
So I guess about a week ago, I know that most of the commissioners were out at conference last week. I sent an email to all of you guys regarding the accounts payable function in the county. I'll just, I'll read it aloud to what I wrote and everything because I don't know if you have that printed or with you because I didn't know if you planned on talking about that today. I would like to address the accounts payable function in Hunt County. By now, it's common knowledge, district judges have forfeit that function under the auditor's office. Because they forfeit it, because accounts payable is not statutorily required under any specific office, this becomes the responsibility of the court to designate where it will go. That being said, I would like to formally propose that the court put the accounts payable department under the supervision and budget of the county treasurer for the following reasons. Accounts payable is a financial function, therefore needs to remain under an already established financial office... established financial office within the county. This helps preserve the checks and balances of the county government set by the Texas Constitution. Local Government Code one thirteen dot oh six four states that all claims must be approved and inspected by the county auditor. Local Government Code one thirteen oh forty-one states the county treasurer disperses all monies belonging to the county after approval of the commissioner's court. Local Government Code one thirteen oh forty-two and oh forty-three state that the county treasurer endorses all checks and is countersigned by the county auditor. I say that to show that the financial authorities lie with the court, the auditor, and the treasurer. Even if you place accounts payable under the supervision of someone else, these authorities will remain. That person wouldn't assume these authorities just because they are a department head overseeing that function. Next, my background is in accounts payable. I worked for fifteen years in A P before being elected treasurer and believe that qualifies me to oversee that function. I can answer staff questions, address issues with substantial knowledge and experience. Since there hasn't been a definitive approval made, and we are still in the budget process, I respectfully ask that you consider my request. That was just the email that I sent out, very black and white, very, just about the facts. In case anybody doesn't know, the department is also housed within, there was a wall put up and is housed within the confines of my office going through the main door, allows me to be able to see the ins and outs of that office, are there daily comings and goings, efficiency of office, anything like that. So with that, I'll just, that's exactly what I wanted to put out. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Brittany.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for letting me speak.
You bet. All right. Anything else? Anybody on the line?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion during executive session under, it's item one. You do anything, Daniel, or just under item one?
So move.
Second.
Entertaining motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're in executive session at ten thirty-one. All right, thank y'all.
We staying at here today?
Yeah.
Did you get us off?
Uh... We up?
I'm not showing it yet.
All right, we're back in regular session, it's 10:48. Is there anything else discussed today? Being done, entertaining motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Entertaining motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We're adjourned at 10:49.
Daniel.
Hey, Sandy. Yeah. Run the bridge. Yes, yes. Phone stipends. Get what? Okay. Phone stipends.
Daniel.
Yeah.
May I have three minutes with you?
I really can't.
Okay, that's all right.
He waited for me at the office since then.
That's all right.
I can call you later, as soon as I get out of that.
Yeah.
How can you call?
I'll call you.
Okay.
You call me.
Come on, just to have.